...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Anker.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
David Quorum, Your Honor.
All right, everybody see right on number one, we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No in favor?
Aye.
Number two is a motion approving the minutes from November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. We need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have nothing under recognition and awards, so we'll go to number four. We need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, under public hearings, resolution reviewing wastewater treatment facility plan.
Thank you.
You brought a helper.
I did. I did. So, so tonight, we want to make sure that we hit all the key points for our wastewater facility hearing that we're having. So, coming tonight from S E H., we have Bob Coors and also Susan Danzel. And Susan has been working with us at the treatment plant for probably the last seven years on different projects, and she's been our, our main contact for this project and, and working forward. So she's come tonight just to fill in any blanks and make sure that we're hitting all the key, important topics on this hearing. So, as, as we discussed at the previous meeting, this has been about a five-year project that we've been working through with a phase one and a phase two of our facility plan. Some of the key parts of our wastewater treatment plant that we, we've had many improvements over the years, and with original infrastructure beginning in nineteen oh four, carrying through with projects every five to ten years, major improvements up through two thousand fourteen. And the main thing I, I want to stress from, from this slide is the infrastructure that you see in the nineteen thirty-nine photo, all but one of those buildings are still in use in two thousand nineteen. So, a lot of, a lot of good, long-lasting infrastructure, it's a good treatment process, but at, at eighty years old, it's time to look in a different direction. So, through our facility plan process, we evaluated different criteria to try and project out for twenty years, looking at projecting out to twenty forty. So through that process, we looked at population growth using our comp plan. We also looked at industrial growth from Hormel and other industrial users in the city, and we projected that out, out twenty years, looking at, we, we'll, we'll talk about a couple of different numbers. Originally, we were looking at flow rate in twenty twenty of ten point zero million gallons per day, and then, so some of our estimates are based on that, but then later, the final numbers are based on ten point four million gallons per day. So, the chart that you see on the far right-hand side talks about frozen mass limits. And I want to just turn it over to Susan to talk about that a little bit and what that means to the city.
One of the first steps.
Give her the exciting stuff.
Yes, give her the hard stuff.
One of the first steps in looking at the alternatives was to identify what treatment requirements are. The M P C A has a process to do this. You submit a preliminary effluent limit request. Austin, the city of Austin's wastewater treatment plant is a little unique in that it's expanding, and that triggers the federal anti-degradation rules. And basically, what those rules mean is that the states of the water, the waters of the state cannot be degraded further than they are today. So when a wastewater treatment plant is expanding, means they can't discharge any more of any particular contaminant or pollutant. And so, the table on the right there identifies what's a frozen mass limit. So basically, the Austin wastewater plant can't discharge more, so when you have more coming in and more can't go out, the treatment needs to improve. So the concentration levels that need to be met at the future flow are lower than they are today, but what's important is that all the concentrations that are identified in that table and the very seasonal concentrations are all achievable with conventional treatment processes. It's nothing that requires a unique or specialized process or a limit that would be difficult to meet with normal processes today.
So, during the initial design process, we looked at all of our existing equipment at the wastewater treatment plant and identified different, three different categories. The top items listed in green are infrastructure that is good and can be reused. The infrastructure in the middle is, is questionable infrastructure. It, it needs a lot of improvement, so it kind of depends on which, which treatment process we, we change to. And then, the items identified in red at the bottom are those that are beyond their useful life, they need to be replaced. Even if we stayed with the same treatment process, they would need to be replaced. During our evaluation process, we looked at five different criteria. We wanted a treatment process that was achievable, so we want something that is tried and true, something that has examples in the state or, or close by, in adjacent states that we know will work for us. We want a system that's robust, something that will handle our, our high flows that we get during flood times, and also variations in strength that we get at the wastewater treatment plant. So we're, we're looking for a system that's robust. We're also taking into account our operation and maintenance. We want to make sure that we're not adopting a system that's very high in energy use. We want to make sure that we're being energy conservative with this project, looking at all of those things. When it comes to chemical addition, that gets expensive, so we want to make sure that we're trying to manage that as well, so that's a factor in, in how we move forward. Reuse of the existing infrastructure, again, all those items that we have listed in green that are in good condition, we want to make sure that we're trying to maximize their reuse. And then also comfort level, we want a system that is easily operated by our treatment plant staff, and we don't want something that's too complex that makes it too difficult to operate. So, those are different factors that we looked at when evaluating our, our alternatives. So, alternative number one was to expand or upgrade our existing system, and Susan and her group at S E H. has gone through, identified our existing equipment, what needs to be replaced, what needs to be upgraded, in order to meet those new flow requirements with our existing treatment process. Working through that, costs were put together for construction, and then expanding that out for a twenty-year net present value to, for alternative number one, to expand our current process, extending that out would be eighty-nine point three million dollars. There are some pros and cons to doing that, and again, these costs were based on ten M G D. plant design. Alternative number two was looking at a combined activated sludge treatment process, again, looking at what type, what facilities we can reuse, what facilities need to be reconstructed, and coming up with costs for that. The, the initial construction cost is a little bit more, but the twenty-year net present value is slightly less than alternative number one at eighty-seven point seven million. Again, there's different pros and cons to each one, so, so we evaluated that during the process. And then, alternative number three was keeping the domestic and industrial plants completely separate and not combining them. That had the most overall cost, and the reason for that is because the two different flow streams that we get, we talk a lot about having an industrial plant and a domestic plant, and really, our, our industrial plant serves Hormel, and our domestic plant serves the remainder of the city. And then, through the treatment process, they combine, some processes are separate and some are combined, and we found that by combining the systems or the processes, it's the most efficient way of treating waste for the entire city. So, that ultimately is option number two. So when we look at a breakdown of the different alternatives, we have alternative one, two, and three that we just talked about. Alternative number four would be to construct a brand-new wastewater treatment plant on a green site. That cost is estimated at about a hundred and fifteen million dollars to do that. And alternative number five would be to do nothing, which, that has an unknown cost to us, and that's a very difficult decision because we are currently right at our limits right now, and our infrastructure, as you've seen in those photos, was in some places over eighty years old. So, we're at a point where we need to make a decision, we need to decide how we want to move forward, and this process has helped us work through that. So when you look at initial construction cost and our twenty-year net present value, the alternative number two is the most cost-effective from that. Susan, do you want to talk about net present value just a little bit?
Yeah, capital cost is one way to look at the alternatives, but when you want to look at the, the lifecycle, and we're looking at a twenty-year planning period, we wanted to, to factor in the operations and maintenance cost of the facility, so that's the electricity, the chemical that's used, the staff estimates of these different alternatives. And then we also factor in the salvage value. So, when there's new structures being built today, at the end of the twenty years, they still have thirty years of remaining life, whereas, for example, alternative one, where there's more reuse of existing infrastructure, at the end of twenty years, those structures have no remaining useful life, so there's no value there. So when you factor in those, those costs of salvage and the operations and maintenance, alternative two has the lowest net present value.
So all those numbers that we've been talking about were based on a ten point zero M G D. plant, and based on that, we looked at alternative number two as the most cost-effective for moving forward. After we decided on alternative number two, we looked at the plant size just a little bit more, and looking at existing flows from the community and from the industry, we decided we better bump that up just a little bit, so we went to ten point four million gallons per day, and the new cost breakdown there is on the right side of the handout, and ultimately, the total cost bumps up from about seventy-four million to seventy-eight million to provide that additional capacity. So that is the estimate that we are looking at moving forward, and we have a projected schedule there. There's about, it would be our goal to start this process in two thousand twenty with design, preliminary design, and that will take about a year to eighteen months. So, this is a continued, long process to make sure that we're, we're working through all of the ins and outs on a large project like this, and our goal to start construction would be June of two thousand twenty-one, and then there would be about three years of construction. So, this is a very long process, we've been working on it for about five years, and we have about another five years or so left just getting through construction. So, we'll continue to manage our existing treatment plant and make sure that it continues to meet the requirements that we have for the next few years until while this project is being built. So, talking a little bit about funding and how can we fund a project like this, we, we will look at a, a cost split for the overall construction costs. We talked about the two different plants, one being domestic and industrial, and the cost split there is somewhere about forty-five to forty-eight percent domestic and fifty-two to fifty-five percent industrial. That will, we have a bit of a range there, and that will narrow itself down as we work through the design process. We've also started looking at different funding alternatives, and as you all know, we have approached the state for bonding, a two-year process of seven point five million dollars in two thousand twenty and seven point five million dollars in two thousand twenty-two. None of that is guaranteed, but that is something that we've kind of entered into the equation here. Other grant opportunities is a point source implementation grant, up to seven million dollars to cover costs related to phosphorus reduction. And then the last one is a, a possible green project reserve grant of up to a million dollars for energy conservation, things that we would incorporate at the treatment plant. So, if we were successful in getting all of those grants, our, our cost to our users would come down from seventy-eight million down to fifty-five million. And that would be the amount that we would have to look at trying to fund. Council adopted a rate increase of twenty-five percent in two thousand eighteen, and a seven percent rate increase over the next five years through two thousand twenty-three. By two thousand twenty-three, our rates for our customers, our residents, will be forty-nine dollars a month. And when looking at how that compares with other communities, you can see on the chart to the left, the monthly water, wastewater charge, in two thousand twenty-three, we'll be at forty-nine dollars per month, and comparing that, that's more than many of the communities. Those other communities that we have listed there, those are all two thousand eighteen rates. They will likely have rate increases over the next five years as well, so it will come up some number. You can see where we are, where Austin is at currently in two thousand eighteen at thirty-five oh six, right in the middle of the pack, and our rate increases by two thousand twenty-three would put us up at forty-nine dollars a month, which is going to put us on the high side when comparing with other two thousand eighteen rates. If we are successful in getting the grants that we have listed there, we would anticipate that we would need our rates to be highlighted in yellow there at forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents to fund this infrastructure. So, based on our current rate increase, if we're successful in getting the grants, we're sitting pretty good with where we're at. But if we are not successful in getting any of those grants, we've estimated that our rates for our customers would need to be fifty-three dollars and ten cents. So we will need to reevaluate rates if we're not successful with some of these grants. So that are, those are some of the things that we will continue to work through over the next eighteen months as we're working through the design. We'll, we'll go through everything with a fine-tooth comb, look to cut costs wherever we can. We'll know this summer where we sit with our first round of bonding through the legislature, so that'll help us know a little bit more of how that is coming through, and it's a process that we will continue to work on over the next eighteen months. Again, all these, these rates that we talked about here are based on these wastewater treatment plant improvements. Remember, our sewer user fees go not only toward the wastewater treatment plant, but also all of our collection system. So as we identify large projects through our collection system that are identified through our I and I. program, that may be above and beyond these rates. So, then, the last slide is just pulled out, word for word, from the executive summary for the facility plan that Susan and her group has put together that I want to include in this presentation as well. So, with that, turn it over to the council or the public with any questions that they might have.
Council. We did go through this at a work session, so we've got most of our, our inquiries are taken care of. I want to thank you guys, you and your whole staff. I know this is a lot of work for you at S E H. also. It's a public hearing, is there anybody here that wishes to ask questions or have any input? If not, we need a resolution approving the facility plan.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, thank you guys, S and H. for coming. I suppose you're up in the cities, right? So, you got a little bit of a trip ahead of you, but the weather should be all right. Thanks for coming down. Under petitions and requests, six is a motion approving a four-way stop sign at Tenth Drive and Fifth Place Southeast. Stephen?
Yep, this is what we talked about at the last work session. We have a temporary stop sign installed at Fifth Place and, or Tenth Place and Fifth Drive Southeast, and it was recommended at the work session to bring this forward, to change to a permanent stop sign at that location based on the positive feedback that we've heard throughout the summer.
Council, anything?
I just want to ask, just because I know people are going to ask me, how many accidents? This is, so the last stop sign we had had zero accidents, is that correct? And then this one, is it twenty-five?
It was thirty-one, thirty-two in ten years.
Yeah, this intersection is one of the higher accident intersections that we have in the city. There was a total of twenty-four accidents over a ten-year period from two thousand six to two thousand fifteen. It actually ranked number nine as the, the highest number of accidents at this intersection.
And there had been more between two thousand sixteen and now.
Correct.
That aren't included in that.
About this, yeah, increasing at about the same rate over the last few years, yes.
I use that intersection a lot, and when you stop going east, that sun is right in your eyes in the morning, so it's, it can be a little dangerous there. Okay, anything else? If not, we need a resolution for number five, or wait a minute, number six, a motion.
So moved the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven is a resolution extending the Austin Home Initiative Housing Tax Abatement through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Members, first of all, the date should be December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, to continue our three-year time horizon that we've had in the past, so I'd like to make that adjustment. We've seen significant investment with construction of about eighteen point eight million with the previous abatement program. We had positive comments from many folks about that and utilizing different stories of projects that move forward that wouldn't have been possible without the abatement program. Council action is requested to approve the extension of the program.
Council, any input, comments? Then we need a resolution for number seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution approving contract with Flashing Thunder Fireworks. That's a good name for a fireworks company.
Very creative, yeah.
Before you tonight is the contract with Flashing Thunder Fireworks for the two thousand twenty fireworks. On the Fourth of July, we need to get an agreement or a contract in place now, otherwise we have the potential of losing our spot. So what we've proposed is thirty thousand dollar budget for the two thousand twenty fireworks, which is last, in two thousand nineteen, it was thirty-two grand for two nights. So again, council's given us direction to just go for one night. So again, we'd request council approval of the contract with Flashing Thunder Fireworks. And then on a side note, Hormel Foods did approve this morning, they sent me an email, a ten thousand dollar contribution towards the Fourth of July fireworks, so.
We certainly want to thank them for that.
Appreciate the, their response on that.
Council, any input? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is an ordinance, or reviewing an ordinance to repeal section nine point three five unattended vehicles. Chief?
This is an ordinance that we don't believe most people are aware of, and hence it has little to no deterrent effect, is also one that we do not generally enforce, that is the running of the car, especially in our winter climates, to have it warm up. A lot of the cars now do come with remote starts from the factory, they don't actually have keys in them to be taken or driven off, so that's a little bit antiquated. The second section is unlawful to leave a, a car with a key in it. While not wise, we don't think that behavior is probably criminal behavior, and as such, we'd ask for this entire ordinance to be stricken.
Council? If, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we need B., an ordinance for adoption and publication.
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number ten is a resolution accepting the Hormel Foundation Grant Awards. Tom?
It's that time of year where the request for Fourth of July, or for the Hormel Foundation two thousand twenty requests have been approved and officially approved by the foundation. As council can see, there were three, six, what, seven items that were specifically approved for the city of Austin, plus three quality-of-life items that passed through the city of Austin, plus two bridge enhancements, and a welcome to Austin sign, in total, this is over eight hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of grants that we will receive in two thousand twenty from the foundation.
What was the total?
Over, I think it was eight hundred and forty-three thousand, fair call. In order for council to accept these donations, we need council to approve a resolution, and we'll also be sending a thank you to the foundation that we'd request all of you to sign also.
Council, anything? If not, we need a resolution for ten.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution establishing license and operational fees for two thousand twenty. Ms. Gazel.
Yes, I'm speaking on this because a lot of the first part of this ordinance, or this resolution deals with the clerk's office and all of the license fees. We sat down and looked at the each individual fee, some of them we increased and some of them we didn't, just in that first section of it. We kind of sat down and looked at exactly how much time it takes us and how much, you know, expense goes into each type of fee. And then another thing to note, we did add, increased the administrative billing fee, which would be on, like, the grass removal, that was fifty-two forty, and we raised it to sixty dollars. It was originally set twenty-three years ago and hadn't been touched since then, so we thought it was time to maybe increase that a little bit. We sat down, did some calculations as to what we thought would be fair. And there's some other fees in there that we just go through for each department, but a lot of the other departmental fees didn't change. So if you had any questions on any of the fees, we could answer that. Otherwise, we would just request that you would approve the resolution.
Council? If there's nothing, we need a resolution for eleven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution setting the position and wage rates for two thousand twenty seasonal and part-time positions. Ms. Weakman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an annual resolution that we, we run through, the, to be effective January one, two thousand twenty, and this is for temporary seasonal positions that are not covered by labor agreements. Department heads have weighed in, and the recommendations are included in this, includes an increase to the minimum wage would be effective January one, two thousand twenty, and then all the other individuals are listed below.
Council? Then we need a resolution for twelve.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is resolution ordering the feasibility reports for the two thousand twenty construction projects. Mr. Lang?
This is the first step in planning for our two thousand twenty reconstruction season, so we have six projects identified there, and for the public, I'll just run through them quick, we have Tenth Street Northeast, Oakland Place to Second Avenue Northeast, and also Fourth Street Southwest, Oakland Avenue to First Avenue Southwest. We're continuing projects in the southwest quadrant as well with Fifth Street Southwest from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue Southwest from Fourth Street to Sixth Street, and Seventh Street Southwest from Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue. We've identified a project on Fifth Avenue Northeast from Oakland Place to Nineteenth Street Northeast. We've also, we're continuing in the northwest quadrant, where we've been working for the last couple of years, on Seventh Street Northwest from Eighth Avenue to Thirteenth Avenue, and Ninth Avenue Northwest from Fourth Street to Eighth Street. Two other projects we have included is Turtle Creek Two, the sanitary sewer project, we'll Two other projects we have included is Turtle Creek Two, the sanitary sewer project, we'll put together a feasibility plan for that, and also some sidewalk on Fourth Avenue Northwest from Twelfth Street to Fourteenth Street by the athletic field.
Counsel, any input or questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for thirteen. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thirteen, or fourteen is a resolution approving a loan from the General Fund to the Airport Construction Fund for airport improvements. Stephen?
I'll take that.
Tom?
One of the last meetings, the council approved a contract with S E H to start work on some easement project with Armory. And looking at that contract, plus the, how can I say it, the slow reimbursement by the FAA on some of our projects in the past, there's a good chance that year-end, we will have negative cash in the Airport Construction Fund. So at this point in time, I'd request council approve a zero percent loan between the General Fund and the Airport Construction Fund, so we will have positive cash there, and then once my FAA reimbursement comes in, we'll pay the General Fund back. It's all just an accounting process that we don't want to show negative cash at year-end.
Okay. Counsel, if, we need a resolution for fourteen. So moved. Second. Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a resolution approving an I C M with international paper. Mr. Lang?
Yep, we approve these periodically, and it is a, an agreement that regulates waste that is above normal household waste. And we regulate flow, B O D, T S S, nitrogen, and P H. This is a three-year agreement with international paper, and we would recommend approval.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for fifteen. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a resolution approving a contract with Bodler, Moss, Foreman, and King L L P for prosecution services. Greg?
Yes, Mayor, council members, this is just simply an extension, a three-year term of the same agreement that we've had in the past, otherwise, no changes. Council action is requested to approve.
We've been very happy with them, haven't we, Chief?
We've been very happy with them. They do an outstanding job for us.
Okay, great. We need, unless somebody has a question, we need a resolution for sixteen. So moved the resolution. Second. Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Evestane.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one of staying, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is a resolution accepting donations to the city. It's self-explanatory, we need a resolution. So moved. Is there a second? Mr. Anker.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eighteen is three motions granting the Planning and Voting Department a power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 903 Ninth Avenue Southwest, the Anderson property, need a motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 707 Eighth Avenue Southwest, the Clark property, need a motion. So moved. Third second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And C, 2305 Thirteenth Street Southwest, the Mangesha and Shiroff property, need a motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I am going to go through all the appointments at one time, and we can appoint them all at once, if that's fine with everybody. You can see this might take just a second. Approving the following appointments and reappointments to the boards and commissions. Cable TV Committee, reappoint Daniel Heiney through 123122. Fire Civil Service, reappoint Peggy Young through 123122. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, reappoint Vern Lippert, 123124. Human Rights Commission, reappoint Daniel Mueller through 123122. Reappoint Jennifer Barotten through 123122. Appoint Deshaun Belden through 123121. Appoint Ron Schultz through 122122. Library Board, reappoint Stephanie Postma through 123122. Reappoint Alex Mayfield through 122122. Park and Rec Board, appoint Nicholas Johnson through 123123. Pillars of the City, appoint Millie Burrows through 123122. Appoint Peggy Binscoffer through 123122. Appoint David Wolf through 122122. Planning Commission, reappoint Jonathan Capoli 122123. Reappoint Melissa Swenson through 123123. Police Civil Service Commission, reappoint Solomon Paul through 123122. Port Authority, reappoint Michael Bedner through 123125. Sustainability Task Force, reappoint Steve Keim through 123122. Appoint Sidney Weisinger through 123122. Austin Mauer County Home Ownership Board, appoint Terry Stow through 123122. That's it. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we need a motion. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now two citizens addressing the council. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council on any matter tonight? Otherwise, yes, sir. Why don't you come on up here, give us your name and your address and your concerns?
Hi, my name is Alex Knoll, member of, resident of Rochester, actually, 550 28th Street Southeast. I came to address item nine on the agenda, though now that is passed, I don't know if it's necessarily relevant anymore.
You can talk to us.
Okay. Yeah, it's...
Unattended vehicle ordinance?
Yes, yes. I'll try to keep this brief, I hope I can stand to, but I'm speaking today, my name's Alex Knoll, I'm a liability engineer with Excel Energy. I'm stationed at the Wind Farm O N M building in Dexter, Minnesota. I'm speaking today in support of revising Section 9.35 rather than repealing it. During future work sessions regarding the Jake breaking ordinance that we'd like to see included as well, I propose that we revise Section 9.35 to uphold it and its applicability towards internal combustion vehicles while amending it to permit idling of electric vehicles. I think it's definitely true that the relevance of the section as-is today is not necessarily the greatest. We don't have keys for our cars, some of us anymore. If you drive a Tesla, you don't even have a key, you just have a cellphone. But I think that it's important that we honor the original potential intention of the ordinance. I'm going to read a small section from minneapolis.mn.gov on their anti-idling vehicle ordinance. Anti-idling ordinance restricts the idling of cars and other gas or diesel-powered vehicles to no more than three minutes in a one-hour period. Another portion of the ordinance limits idling of buses, trucks, and other diesel-engine-powered vehicles to no more than five minutes in a one-hour period. Exhaust from an idling car carries a higher load of pollutants than a moving car, so reducing unnecessary idling is one easy way we can all do something to improve air quality. Vehicle motors released into the air, particulate matter, dirt, nitrous oxides, hydrocarbons, carbon monoxide, and carbon dioxide. And the U.S. Department of Energy states that winter, in general, you don't need more than 30 seconds to appropriately warm up your vehicle. Most effective way to do it is to just let it warm up for a little bit and then drive it slowly to get it up to operating temperature. So I think we're all in agreement that clean, healthy, localized air pollution is something that we should work to minimize. But, you know, I think it goes without saying that on global scale, carbon dioxide is becoming increasingly important gas that we're trying to monitor. And I think that the Sustainability Task Force would be pleased to see this section upheld as it demonstrates to Austin and the rest of the world that we're ready to be a leader in making decisions that demonstrate sustainable practices.
Do you know if any cities are adopting ordinances like you're talking about? They are.
Yeah, so the city of Minneapolis has an ordinance, Chapter 58 on idling, that I think would be a very good model for what Austin could potentially adopt. It restricts idling of cars and other gas or diesel-powered vehicles. So I'd like to see Austin amend this rather prehistoric Section 9.35.
Well, it makes sense what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, as an electric vehicle driver, I very much enjoy the convenience of remote-starting my car, allowing it to warm up using great electricity, and I still have a nice warm vehicle to get into, and I'd like to be able to continue to do that.
Can I have you get ahold of Chief McKeeken? And Dave, would you have, find out more about this and maybe present it at our next work session? And, I mean, it sounds like it makes, it's something worth looking into. Is the council in agreement on that?
Well, can I ask this question? So the ordinance that we previously had made it illegal to idle it at all with a key, and we didn't enforce it, right? Is there any reason to think that we would enforce a five-minute ban?
It would be almost an impossibility and impractical for us to try to time cars or... I agree with the intent of the ordinance, in fact, this one was written in 1980, which probably had something to do with the oil embargoes at the time. But I, but I think, again, from a practical standpoint, it's not something we enforce, ticket people for. It's very difficult, it's culturally not where we're at. I agree with the young man that I think the best way to address it is through trying to have a culture change versus, you know, making it illegal, just because, again, it's not something that we stop, try to find owner of a car, write a citation for, as-is. And like I said, to have it be a three-minute, a five-minute, you know, something of that nature, be very difficult for us to enforce going forward. But I do understand the young man's perspective on the issue, and I appreciate having him say that. Certainly, if the council would like to readdress it from an environmental standpoint, we could look at it. I just know that there is not, you know, as we looked at this, this is a municipal decision, there's never been, and there's not a statewide ban on this type of activity, there's no corresponding state statute as a whole that prevents you from idling a car or leaving your key in the car.
Alex, I think we just enacted this ordinance tonight. I don't know if anybody wants to go through that, you know, redoing it now, but why don't, if you could get the information to Dave, you know...
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't we take this idea to the Sustainability Task Force and look at it for more of an encouraging... Maybe the city can make a policy for city vehicles that they not idle for more than a certain amount of time. Maybe we can do something along those lines. I agree, I don't think the, is it an illegal act is really the path we want to go down, but that doesn't mean it needs to die. It seems to me it would fit the best with sustainability task force.
It would show that we're making an effort, you know, and as far as pollution and stuff. Would you...
I think we've ordered to repeal it. I think we should stick with our original vote.
Oh, I do too. I think we should, I don't, I don't think we should go through that, but I mean, maybe we should get more information, like Laura says, and just see what it is, and look at it, maybe for city vehicles and something in the future. Can you get your information to Dave or Ann, and we'll contact you and just talk about it a little bit more? I don't think we're going to redo anything tonight, but you know, maybe that's something we can look at as we go through our stuff next year.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming in. Honorary council member, Ervey, I'd rather talk to you now than after the work session, because then everybody on TV gets to enjoy your comments. Don't get nervous.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to just attend and learn from major projects in the city here. I don't watch that much TV, and to be here and witness that is something that mean a lot for me. So just thank you for all I'm learning here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I, just to mention, after you're done, we have Karam is going to be our councilperson. Then we're going to have Abala, Abala, who is here tonight, and after him, I talked to Santino at the thing the other night, and he's going to follow that up after that, so we're probably set through most of next year now, and everybody's excited about it. I think the program's working really well. Reports and recommendations. We'll start with Paul tonight. Jason?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing.
Rebecca?
Steve?
I just want to say that the mayor and I had lunch with the new unit in Austin and welcomed them, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're getting deployed in June, so they're going to need a lot of support from us next year.
And they're going to the Horn of Africa, which isn't exactly a paradise spot, so...
Right.
And they're mostly, they're not, it's a Fairville unit, we swapped units with Fairville, so, you know, a lot of them aren't local, but they're local as long as they're stationed here, and that could be, you know, we don't know how long, quite a while, though, but yeah. And as far as the Yellow Ribbon, they may need services or whatever, but we're kind of excited, it's a good group. Glad we got to go out there and talk to them. Craig, what do you got?
We, yeah. We had notice from the Minnesota Rural Design Lab, which is a joint architecture and landscape, architecture graduate design studio that will be held at the Artwork Center. It's basically, they looked at various areas throughout the community of which could benefit from different perspectives, so they focused on Austin and different areas in the community, and have their presentations that they'll be discussing. That event goes, open house from 4:30 to 7:00 on December 9th. There'll be a short presentation at 5:30. They're asking for R S V Ps for the event by December 5th. So if you could do that for the December 9th meeting, that they'll be having an open house from 4:30 to 7:00. You can contact me or Holly Wallace in our office. And then for those folks, we ask that they be mindful of our snow emergency, our last snow emergency. I think there were 60 to 70 tickets handed out to folks, but we'd ask folks to comply with a snow emergency as they're parking out on our city streets.
Jeffrey, I'm sorry, I skipped you.
No, that's fine, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Sure.
I'm sure.
I should make something, I should make something up.
No, but...
Any reports?
Tom has one.
Mr. Anker.
Mayor, you're going to mention the Christmas gathering next...
We're going to have a Christmas gathering?
Gathering after the next council meeting, an email should have gone out to all councilmembers, the R S V P back.
Yeah.
And then for all you excited people, Wednesday this week, through the taxation hearing here, I need a quorum of the councilmembers to show up. So 6 o'clock here on Wednesday with the taxation hearing, and this is where we tell the citizens what we plan to spend their tax dollars on. It is not a forum for people to discuss the valuation of the property that the citizens... Only be discussing our taxes for the form of budget for 2020.
Okay, also, we have the Holiday, Canadian Pacific Holiday Train coming on Friday at 6 o'clock by the old railroad station, right on Tenth Street and Fourth Avenue. It's kind of a, it's good, great for kids. They stop, they play band, the bands play from, right from the train, and it's a great event. It's always well-attended. If you have kids, they really enjoy it. It's kind of a kids' event, so if you get an opportunity, go on to, out to that. Otherwise, if there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Till Monday, December 16th, in the council chambers. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, go take a short break and then have a short work session. Make sure you, Jeff. Yeah, no problem.